Okay, thank you. Again, good evening, everybody. Welcome to those in attendance in the room this evening and those viewing online to the town of Henrietta. Planning Board meeting for Tuesday, October 19th, 2021. Members present Matt Borkowski, Patricia Brill, Craig Eckert, Walter List, Steve McIntyre, Rick Page, Town Staff Chris Martin, Director of Engineering and Planning, Chris Hauser, Deputy Director of Engineering and Planning, and Daniel Mestrella, Planning Board Attorney, and the board would also like to recognize the tenants of Councilman Barley this evening. Thank you. First item on the agenda this evening will be the minutes from our September 21st meeting. For member have any comments or questions on the minutes at all, and if not, the Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Page, thank you.
Second.
Mr. List. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I'm abstaining. I was absent.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Eckert. The minutes are approved. Hey, first application this evening is application number 21-014 CHS Mobile Integrated Healthcare Expansion for final site plan approval of a 7,200 square foot expansion for the storage and parking of ambulances and other emergency vehicles to the existing building located at 280 Cawkins Road in a residential R115 zone district. Who is here representing the applicant, please? I'm sorry? Pastor, oh, thank you. I can. Yeah, that's fine. Yep. And if you folks have business cards or something you can leave on the table, that would be great.
Thank you.
John, is your mic on there? I'm just, does the green light? Okay.
Right there. She's got it.
You got it.
There we go.
Is it good now? There we go. Now I can hear myself. I guess I can just repeat that. So Joshua Saxon, Civil Engineer, Pastor Associates.
Say your last name, please.
Uh, S A X T O N. And as stated, I'm here to present the CHS expansion project. So this project that's just down the road, um, right off Cawkins Road, just to the west of where we are right now. It's located pretty much right at the intersection of Middle Road and Cawkins Road. Just to kind of give an area of where it is, it's right next to the relatively new VA Center to the south, a is a Rochester Regional Health Facility. And then to the east is some railroad tracks and some abandoned lands and forests. So this project is proposed to be a 7,200 square foot expansion mainly for storage and treatment of existing and new ambulatory vehicles for the building. So as part of this project, we did meet with the Does this work as well? I can be.
It does, yep.
I can actually look at the board now. To kind of give like a timeline of this project. A couple of weeks ago, we met with the Conservation Board, provided some comments mainly regarding to the landscaping of the building. We're proposing some shrubs and there was an existing flagpole that I'm sure you guys have seen as you've driven past that we're basically relocating in front of this new addition. It was mainly the species of the shrubs, the location, those were mainly their comments. And we also met to get a front setback variance. As you can see, the front of the building is encroaching in a front setback, and we were granted that variance for it to be encroaching in that it's a 60-foot setback and we got a 31-foot variance for that. Um, going on to the site, um, it's pretty, pretty bare bones site. As you can see, here's the expansion. It's kind of completes kind of like a symmetrical shape of the building. As you can see, there's kind of some storage in the back here and it kind of almost mirrors this back portion of the building. And like I said before, this will mainly be for storage of and parking of emergency vehicles. As a part of this project, we are proposing a use of the existing curb cut along Cawkins Road. Currently talking with the Monroe County DOT for using that curb cut. So it will be a in and out for this, for this lane. So, you know, ambulances and cars will enter the addition back into their parking spots and then utilize the traffic light on Cawkins and Middle Road to leave the facility. So no, no cars will be exiting out of this entrance. So there's no really other changes to the site other than this addition and the, the proposed road. It will impact some utilities on the site. Mainly the, a sanitary sewer that currently runs parallel to the existing building. So that's going to have to be relocated around the addition or else we would have had to build the building over the, the sanitary sewer. And other than that, there's some roof leaders for the building that will discharge the runoff from the roof to the surrounding area. And there's no other utility, proposed utility connections for this project. Grading, kind of following existing grades of the site. There's a swell that's located along the front of the property that we're basically reforming to this new addition. Just to accommodate the new, the new building that's in front and then adjusting the grades around it following existing drainage patterns around the building, which drains away from the building either to the railroad tracks or along to Cawkins Road. It's pretty much the, the gist of the site. We did receive comments from the, the town staff, including Chris's comments from engineering, fire department, and billing and fire present prevention. There wasn't really any show or stopper comments for any of them, though mainly some little redesign of the sanitary sewer and some cleanup of the plans, adding some notes. And there was, I don't believe there's any fire marshal comments. So it was a lot of just adding notes and making some adjustments to the plans. So I didn't have anything else to present. So if you guys have any questions on the site plan, the building, any specific comments you want to go over in the response letter, I'll be more than willing to, to answer any questions the board has.
John, thank you. And I do want to say how much we appreciate these response notes that you folks sent to us. That, that helps a lot. So thank you for taking the time to do that. Yeah, we'll just, we'll, we'll pull the board here and see if anybody's got questions. So the Chair will recognize Mr. Eckert. You're welcome.
Now we're on, there we go. Thank you. Yeah, I have two quick questions. One is I'm confused on the permanent easement to Monroe County Department of Transportation that you're showing. What is that to?
So yeah, so that's, it's mainly for, I feel like we talked about this today. It's a, a service to the existing building. They'll just have to be rerouted in the addition. It's for the, the traffic light. And that's also been in the talks with the DOT.
The access to the light.
Yeah.
Emergency, oh, okay. All right. That's, I wondered why it was so odd shaped to the DOT.
Yeah.
Those are laterals or services.
Yeah, it's like a little tail there. So yeah, so that's proposed to be basically put inside this new addition and the easement modified to, you know, go to the proposed.
I understand. Okay, good. That's what was unclear from before. Then the only other question, I know we've talked about this, so I just wanted to kind of be clear so that we can continue forward. And understand the Monroe County DOT has requested the access be removed. Have you communicated since their letter with the DOT?
Yeah, so I've been in talks with Brent at the Monroe County DOT. And I know, I think, believe, I don't know if you want to talk to any of this, Reg, or?
We just had to introduce yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Reg Allen. I'm the Chief and CEO of CHS. So brief history. You know, Henry had ambulance started as a, a branch house on a postage stamp. And we obviously bought the property next door for expansion. When the VA went to put in their new site, there was a lot of assurances made to us, including from the DOT that we would be able to use that curb cut. Unfortunately, the two people that made that agreement are dead. Jim Pond and Jim Bucy were very close and they had a handshake agreement that this wouldn't go away. But so from our perspective, we have to have access to that. And I don't believe we're going to be causing any undue traffic because this is not our primary site for ambulances. This is where we park the extra ambulances. So this isn't even going to happen daily. Our main op, operation still comes out of the main garage with our five first up ambulances, just like they always have. This is where we park the rest of our fleet. Our fleet needs to be in climate controlled conditions because the drugs on the ambulances need to be kept at room temperature. So if we take that away, that means ambulances have to back in from where the garage opening is, which is going to not be great. And I guess from my perspective as a layman, if we sold that property back to somebody and put a house on it, would that still not be a driveway?
Yeah, that's a good question for the Monroe County DOT.
Yeah.
So the fact that it's being combined as a sub parcel.
Right.
What's now removing, right, if it was a single parcel, they may not, they may require a cross access easement.
Yeah, I understand that. But let's say we sell it back. We don't do anything but build a house on it. Is that, what, could that be used as a driveway? I mean, it's still a driveway. So somebody would be coming in and out of there in their home.
No, they may require a cross access easement to your access to be able to access that property.
No, they won't allow that either. And the reason I know that is because we tried to get an access back out onto our driveway and they told us no.
Okay, but that's a question for the DOT.
Right.
That's why I'm trying to, you know, we're not going to be able to, I mean, as it's shown, the DOT is saying that can't go. So I don't, we have to vote on either making it a contingency based off of that.
Yeah, and I'm fine with that. I, I guess.
Trying to speak out of hand, sir.
Yeah.
Trying to think.
Understand.
Forward what we would say.
Yeah, I, I understand that. It's just that in order to make this work, we, we need the curb cut. And unfortunately, like I said, we didn't get anything writing. That's our fault for allowing handshake agreements, which is a lot of how we do business. So I would hope that the DOT would understand that we're not going to create a hazard. I mean, that would be contrary to what we do. So hopefully we can work with them to make that work.
But Josh, you said you've talked to Brent?
Yeah, yeah. And there's been a, I followed up with him, but he hasn't gotten back to me yet, other than the initial. I think it was just the initial look. He was like, oh, we don't, we're not going to use that. But I think with like the new information of maybe it being a write-in only, I think that'll, I think it'll help our case. And I'm just waiting to hear back from the DOT on their, their response, but.
So you're communicating.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all the questions I had. Thank you.
Mr. Record. The Chair will recognize Mr. Borkowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome.
Um, and I'll reiterate, we love it when you guys do this because it makes our job a lot easier. The only thing that stands out to me, and it's probably not a big deal in this situation, is we like to have building materials, at least samples. Is this going to be identical to the existing building? So really, is there not going to be any discernible difference?
No.
Okay.
No, and I believe on the, in the packet, in one of the, on the elevations on the side, there's kind of the materials.
Yeah, and we can see that. And in this case, I really don't mind. Yeah, I've, I've got that.
Yeah.
Uh, in this case, I really don't mind. I think we got, we've gotten away from it when COVID happened because we were doing everything remotely.
Yeah.
But just for future reference, if you know, something else comes up in front of us, just make sure you bring us the building materials. I personally, Mr. Chairman, I'm fine without having it on this one. Because we know what it's going to look like because they have pre-existing stuff. But that was my only concern. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Borkowski. The Chair will recognize Mr. List.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Welcome.
I read over the comments from Chris Martin and Kevin Wilson, as well as the Conservation Board's input and responses to those issues from the developer that we got to today. It seems to have answered things and I see no issue, I see no issues. That's all I have.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. List. Chair will recognize Mr. McIntyre.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome.
The only issue or question that I had, unfortunately, have not gotten up to this on your response is the roof, there was a concern under drainage and grading about the location of the roof laterals.
Yeah, we're, we're, as a part of the updated plan for add the roof lateral locations and to the, to our utility and grading plan to ensure that there, you know, draining in proper areas on the site for that.
I'm sorry, I didn't quite catch all that.
The, so we're going to be adding the roof leaders onto the plan and the updated set of plans submitted to the town.
New addition, the, the downspouts will be connected to roof laterals. The roof laterals will go where?
I believe to splash boxes, I assume. Discharged because of bizpeak grass on the site next to the addition. So it'll discharge through a splash box, which will then discharge onto the site and runoff will, will go where the natural channels go on the site.
And the splash boxes are located in an existing drill swell?
Um, well, it'll, it'll depend on the location of them in the, on the site. You know, where they are located around the building, but really as the site drains out, you know, either drains to a swell along the south or it's, or it's sheet draining to the east. So.
The railroad tracks.
Yeah, the railroad tracks, so.
This will not cause any additional drainage issues?
No, no. We're not proposing any stormwater, I guess, mitigation for this, but it's since it is so low that it's not required. But we will be reforming the swell in this area to ensure proper drainage on the site.
Thank you. All set, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. McIntyre. Chair will recognize Mr. Page.
Thank you. The responses to Chris's comments and the fire marshal and everybody was excellent by your lead group, by Pastor. My only concern that I was going to bring up was my concern about the curb cut. And I was going to ask the question, if I happen to go first, was what do you do if you don't get it? But Reg has sort of already answered that and Craig did a great job. I'm all set.
Thank you, Mr. Page. Chair will recognize Mrs. Brill.
Thank you. And thank you for the, the letter answering all of the comments because all of my comments I was going to ask have been answered either on your letter or by my previous board members. So thank you. I'm all set.
Thank you, Mrs. Bro. Anything from Town Staff, Mr. Martin, Mr. Hauser?
I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anyone else on the board? Anything else?
Can I ask one last question? Emergency generator used on this facility?
A generator, the West generator?
An emergency generator related, will that be necessary for this?
Um, yes, yeah.
Because it's existing, it's a generator and it'll support both structures. Okay. All set.
Thank you, Mr. McIntyre. Yes, you may.
There's no, this is just for storage and maintenance of vehicles. There's no repairs or anything, is there?
I don't believe so.
We're just parking vehicles. They won't change again. They won't change.
Yeah, so there's no need for, I would just a question about an oil separator in a facility like that.
There is, there is one, there is an existing one. It's actually kind of where the building is and where the, the proposed sanitary is leaving the site will have a, an oil water separator there just to ensure that it doesn't affect the sanitary system.
One other thing, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. List.
I didn't know, I didn't want to sign Google Earth. There's a sidewalk that goes in front of the Veterans Facility. But yet there's nothing, you know, there's no, there's no plan for a sidewalk in front of this facility. Is there, or like a walk sign at that intersection? I see a crosswalk from Middle Road over to.
Over there. I mean, we, we didn't have anything proposed right now to continue a sidewalk along the, the frontage of the property.
You are proposing one?
No, we, no, not right now.
I, you know, and whether or not it would need be needed, I don't know, but.
I mean, it's going, going right to the railroad tracks and a forested land. So it's kind of cut off from the other side of Cawkins.
Okay.
Yeah, and I can shed a little more light on that, Walter. I mean, right now there's a sidewalk on the south side, which is part of Lehigh Valley Trail.
Correct.
And because of the crosswalks and the, the location of the railroad tracks, it's better just to have the sidewalk on one side of the road instead of both.
Okay, thank you. That's all. Okay, thank you, Mr. List. Okay, if there's nothing else, the Chair will read a seeker. Seeker review indicates the action under consideration is an unlisted action as per section 617.7 C1VII. The Henrietta Planning Board, as lead agency, has determined that the proposed action described below will not have a significant effect on the environment and that a draft and environmental impact statement will not be required. The action under consideration is a site plan application by CHS Mobile Integrated Healthcare is an unlisted action and will not require a conditioned negative declaration. The purpose of this application is for final site plan approval of a 7,200 square foot expansion for the storage and parking of ambulances and other emergency vehicles to the existing building located at 280 Cawkins Road in a residential R115 zone district. All relevant areas of environmental concern were identified. Evaluation and examination were carefully made in relation of the existing conditions versus the proposed site improvements. It has been determined that there will be no adverse environmental effect as a result of the proposed action. I, James Gruner, therefore make the motion that we make a negative declaration and that the Chairman be authorized to sign the statement of environmental significance. Do I have a sufficient second, please? Thank you, Mr. Eckert. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. And pending the chairs, the ayes have it, the motion carries. Thank you. And the Chair will entertain a motion on the application itself.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve application number 21-014.
Mr. Page.
May I add something to that? Mr. Mestrella, we, I know we have to make this conditional on DOT approval of that driveway. But it also says administrative re-subdivisioning, division is pending. Do we have to put that in a conditional as well? Okay. Because it's administrative. Okay.
Okay, so we do want to add the, the, pending the approval of the MCDOT, correct, as part of the motion?
Yeah, conditional on DOT approval.
Your motion? Including the.
Are you, I, if I restate the motion, are you saying that if Monroe County Department of Transportation denies that access, it, it doesn't go forth?
Correct.
No, I don't want to do that. I don't think I want, I mean.
They would just have to come back.
Yeah, we have to come back. It's not like it dies.
Yeah, it's not.
All right. So I'll make a motion to approve application number 21-014 with a stipulation contingent upon approval by the Monroe County Department of Transportation for the required, or for the proposed curb cut into the new building.
Very good.
I'll second.
Mr. Borkowski, thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Depending on the chair, the ayes have it, the motion carries. Congratulations. Thank you.
If not, we'll come back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, both, ladies, gentlemen.
Next on the agenda is application number 21-015 Rock River Apartments, AKA Aptitude Student Housing for final site plan approval of a six multi-family student housing buildings containing 202 units on 37.2 acres located at 3948 East River Road in a residential R115 district with a mixed use and employment center overlay district. And sir, when you're ready, I'll have you introduce yourself, please.
Just hold it in until the light comes on.
Good evening, James Trasher from CHA Consulting here representing Aptitude Development. We are here for the Rock River Apartments, which are located off of River Road. To the south is Lehigh Station Road, to the north is Bailey Road. We were previously here with a concept plan discussion. Since that time, we've been to the Historic Site Board. We've been to the Conservation Board. And we've been working with the Army Corps of Engineers on submission of a permit for the wetland crossing. We have been working with Monroe County DOT on the two curb cuts. But once I get that mic will this go like this? So as part of this, we went through a process with the Town Board for overlay district with a special permits. So this has a component of apartments with industrial in the rear. During that process, we completed a traffic impact study that went through multiple rounds of revisions and comments with the County DOT. At the conclusion of that, we have full access drives at the south of the site off of River Road and the main entrance located on the northern portion of the site, right next to the residential house, which is also under contract as part of this project. One of the conditions of the Historic Site Board was the preservation of this house. We had to get an Article 10 waiver from the Town Board as well because the proposed driveway and the multimodal trail that is part of this project is within 150 feet. Their board gave recommendations on approval of this project based on where this project started because initially we were bringing our main driveway right through the middle of the house. The, the house was going to come down. We were going to utilize it. We felt that this was the high point in the road. The location of this driveway was selected with Brett and Penn Warden and with the town engineers help because of the sight lines that we get, we're right at the crest of the hill. So we have a, a proper site stopping distance for cars coming in and out. We know this is a heavily traveled road with a secondary access being our southern drive. Additionally, sanitary sewer, we're collecting all our sanitary sewer to the access drive site, which will then be put into a pump via gravity to a pump station that will be pumped to the existing town sewer that is just south of Fairwood over in this location. Stormwater, we have to follow, you know, New York State DEC guidelines for both management and water quality. So our ponds have been done and sized and reports have been submitted and reviewed by the Town Consultant as, as well as your town engineer. Landscaping, we're required to provide 61 trees as part of the project. We have 268. We've received comments from your consultants as related to that. Minor updates that we need to do to detail sheets regarding updates to those plans. So primarily, right off the get-go, we would look to come in and construct these units. We would have six buildings. Total of 201 units between the six buildings, clubhouse and amenity area with walking trails that would work throughout the site. I previously spoke of the permitting process. We're impacting less than a tenth of an acre of wetlands. So we have wetland corridors that work through the site. And you can see in the world of the Army Corps of Engineers, we try to avoid, minimize, and if we have to mitigate. But under a tenth of an acre, it falls under a nationwide permit. So we're just awaiting that permit for that work there. I previously also brought up the multimodal trail. This is an eight-foot wide trail that the town has been promoting. We are going to construct it from property line to property line on the site, eight foot wide, coming up, going behind the house and then behind the cemetery for future connection. So we've been coordinating and working with the Town Engineers Office on location of that. Down below here, we show the building materials and we don't have samples. We've been doing stuff remotely, but if we need to get samples, but it's a blend of stone, vinyl product and other materials that make it up three stories high with blues and earth tones to complement. So those are shown there. I can address any questions that you may have. We look forward to working with the town and hopefully getting this project approved.
Thank you, James. Now let me just verify your last name, Thrasher or Trasher?
Trasher, like the garbage you throw away with the ER on the end.
You got it right.
Thank you.
Yeah. No problem. Everyone likes to throw another H in there. So. So.
Okay, uh, the chair will recognize Mr. Page.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
It's a pretty extensive project. Um, and I'll save some of the comments for my partners, but um. Do you, did you, let to start off with, you got Chris's comments list from, from the fire marshal and from Chris and from everybody. Is there anything that you feel is inappropriate or that you can't address? Or you would like to modify or bring up for discussion?
No, honestly, we went through those. We received the comments yesterday. Um, and there was four different letters. And from our standpoint, a lot of them are just clarification, adding some notes, changing some details, town details. Just really um, general updates which uh, are simple for us to do. Really no technical changes.
Well, then I would like to point out um. What important one for us would be general number seven. Which mentions the conditions of two special use permits. Two thousand twenty one dash zero zero seven and two thousand twenty one dash zero two eight. I remember reading those. They're pretty detailed and, 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 and appropriate. So I want to make sure that um. If, if this is approved, that those special use permits have to be followed to the letter of the law.
One hundred percent. We're only here because we obtained the special use permit. So if we don't adhere to the special use permit, we can't have the apartments in the industrial and open space that's required under the overlay district.
And you also agree that if in the future, any industrial buildings were built, that it will have to come back for a separate.
Correct.
Planting board process?
Correct, yes.
Uh, let's see. Have you done the archaeological?
Yeah, so we've done that and actually submitted it to the New York State Office of Parks, Recreation and Historic Preservation. We received comments back. Their comment was uh, because of the his potential historic site, they wanted uh, landscaping up in this area. They didn't have a copy of the landscape plan, so um, that will, it will just, if needed, will provide additional landscaping between the cemetery and the historic house.
Okay. I'm, I'm going to end there. My teammates have a shot at it. Thank you so much for your answers.
Thank you, Mr. Page. The chair will recognize Mr. McIntyre.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome.
I just want to sort of go back on this uh, permit that's required. Was this required from New York State Department of Environmental Conservation? Or from the R A Corps of Engineers for the wetlands?
Uh, it's because we're crossing a wetland which is here. It was determined under a jurisdictional determination that the Army Corps regulate that. So there's no buffers. Our permit, um, it gets embedded. It's a joint application for permit both to New York State D E C, but the Corps takes control and we will have a nationwide permit for this crossing right here.
So you're saying there's no permit needed?
Oh, there is. There is a permit, but it's under a nationwide. So there's thresholds with the Army Corps, less than a tenth of an acre, tenth to a half an acre. And then, so it's either an individual permit or a nationwide permit. Nationwide permits are routinely given, you know? So we don't have any concern about obtaining that permit from the Army Corps of Engineers.
And that letter of determination that was given to the town?
Correct.
Does that satisfy the town boards' request that they have to have a, some sort of a permit for the wetlands?
Yeah, that's certainly one of the conditions in the town board resolution condition. So yes, that would suffice.
No longer becomes a condition of uh, uh, site approval.
Correct.
Okay. Well, let's see here. I wanted to talk about the the wetland areas again. You'll be posting those. How will you be posting, using certain signs? Do you have the signs developed?
For protecting of these? Yeah, so when, under construction, we, we put up construction fencing surrounding uh, wetlands that are in the area of where we're working and they'll be posted, wetlands keep out. Likewise, where we're doing the crossing contractor will be required to come in, put uh, orange construction fencing across. So we limit our disturbance. Once construction is complete, they become looking like natural wet vegetated areas. So this will all be manicured areas throughout here. These wetlands uh, will be preserved.
That is, as construction is completed and uh, site is under use. How will you keep the, will you be posting the wetlands?
Oh, you can, like with this, the only thing you can't do to wetlands is fill them. So you know, um, the D E C Army Corps want them to be attributes to development. So the construction fence will come down and if you're sitting here, you're walking by, you'll come down this walking trail, you'll walk by a wetland, probably not going to go hang out in it, but you'll walk past it. So it, it becomes a, an amenity to our project. Giving you sort of that natural feel versus, you know. A lot of developers, we would come in and say, hey, can we just take this finger out? It's, it gets us to point nine acres of wetland impacts. Let's blow it out. Let's you know, make it nice green grass and then we'll go mitigate and create wetlands over here, which are away. Uh, the developers that we're working for wanted us to keep this to make it more of that suburban feel where you have landscaped area. You have the, the natural vegetation. And so we're blending that between, you know, what we're doing and keeping stuff, you know, in its natural state.
Yeah, I thought I read something that uh, said the town was, somebody was requiring the wetlands be posted.
Yeah, I, I can answer that, Mr. McIntyre. Um, we've been asking our developers and applicants to uh, post some of the wetlands. You know, not every hundred feet or so, but a few signs here and there, just so people that know that, hey, it's a wetland. Um, we have details that we can provide you or that's probably in your marked up plans.
That's fine.
So um, if you need anything, James, we can certainly provide those for you or they're on our town website.
And we can do that as well. So the great thing about this is, you know, from a maintenance standpoint, typically I'll use in a single family residential development. If you had lots coming up to this, people then start like mowing and they like throwing their stuff out back here where this is going to be professionally maintained and operated. The, the maintenance folks will know where wetlands are. So we will put up the necessary signs, but you know, the people doing the work here, you know, won't utilize this and create issues that we could get our hands slapped by regulators.
And the last thing I wanted to ask about was the phase two industrial area. What's, is there a is there anything further on that? Is it going to be immediately developed or is it down the road?
It's, it's slightly down the road. Um, we have to get this portion uh, going. Uh, the developer that we're working for is putting this piece out onto the marketplace uh, because there's a lot of activity for people looking for stuff right now. But they want to get this moving once access because people want to also be able to look at the site when they're looking at stuff. So I would say we'll probably be back to you within the next year uh, to talk about the development of this parcel.
In the meantime, that portion of the site will remain undisturbed, correct?
Correct.
And uh, any earth piles and stuff will be kept off that left on the main construction site.
Correct. So we're in, you know, and anything we try to do, we try to balance the site. We strip the top soils, stack pile, stop top soil. Anything that we don't need to utilize onsite for topsoil, we try to get rid of because there's a value to it. And there might be some just minor staging back here when they get back to these buildings, but we're not looking to disturb that site until we uh, start construction.
All stuff for now, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. McIntyre. The chair will recognize Mr. List.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome.
Based on um, aptitudes um. Portfolio of properties around the country, they really seem to know student housing very well. So I have full confidence that this will be a really terrific project. As long as comments, as long as everything else is adhered to, I have no issues with it.
Perfect. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. List. Chair will recognize Mr. Borkowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Welcome.
Um, there's a lot of notes here and I know that you said you could address them. I'm not going to go down the thing, but I do have a couple of questions. One, the asphalt trail that you're putting in for the bikes and everything, there is a note about calming down these right angles. You've got four right there up by the road.
Yep.
Is that something we're going to be able to do fairly easily? Because I mean, one of them is going right into a road. So if it's kind of dark and somebody's going, you're going on a road, that's not good.
Yeah, we, you know, in terms of the alignment, how the town, because this is really gets at the end of the day, turned over to the town of Henrietta. So if, if they want a more uh, mild sweep into this, where we're crossing the, our driveway, we just want to come in at a location outside of the radius where we can have a proper crosswalk. So people, it's, it's safe. And they didn't want it too far into the site. Initially, I had it pushed back a little bit further. They've asked it for it slightly more forward. So we can sweep this radius. I would look at still keeping this sort of ninety degrees because if you're walking or riding, it helps you slow down before you get to this. Um, and then here, this is just working around the cemetery property. So we can, we can sweep this into here or we can keep that alignment, whatever the town's desire is.
Do you see any problem with that, Chris? Yeah, I know there's some grave changes in there that we're concerned about. Um, but you know, one of the big concerns is if you're going down the hill on a bicycle. You know, obviously you're picking up speed and, and when you hit a sharp turn like that. So on the mark to plans, um, you have, James.
Yep.
Uh, we, we kind of made some suggestions.
Okay.
So why don't you go through them and then, you know, certainly we'll review them as part of our project for, for this.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can say that's such an easy thing, I think, to fix, but it would be remiss if we didn't mention it because I, just that first turn, you're right. If you swept that, that'd be fine. The other one's fine because you're, we're making the stop before the road. Um, and if they were to continue going forward, at least during the grass, you know?
Yeah, I honestly look at, you know, if it's, I'll look at their markups because we, he just handed them to me. You know, just from a grading standpoint, if we come off the edge of our driveway and we keep a, you know, a sort of a flat area and have this follow in this area, it becomes much easier from a grading standpoint where we're not coming and then raising terrain and then flattening it off. So um, that's what we look to do most likely.
Uh, next thing I have here is uh, there's a note that it appears that there's only one dumpster enclosure on this whole site. Is that accurate?
Probably uh, we'd need to add more if, if, if there's a comment about that.
Yeah, it's towards the lower right hand corner.
Right here?
Yeah, that's the only one that I saw. I, I didn't see him.
Yeah, we probably need to add some more because if I'm living in building three, and so I apologize from our behalf is that we're not taking trash all the way out here.
Right.
Lucas is from aptitude. Are you doing anything internal to these buildings and maintenance is taking out? Yeah.
Hello, Lucas Smallfield with Aptitude Development.
Oh, your last name, please?
A M A L F I. So typically on a student housing project, we do uh, something called valet trash. So each tenant will have a small trash bin outside their unit door. And they just fill up the, their trash bin and our maintenance men will take it to that thirty yard dumpster and uh, empty trash.
Is, is that going to be enough? There's one dumpster?
So I'll just use another location. So I've done all the projects. You've looked at our engineering firm has done it. Bayville to Louisville. We've always gone with one dumpster and it really gets into the number of pickups. So it could be that here if it's, you know, waste management once a day versus once every three days. So that's really based on how often people are throwing stuff away. So that, you know, Coastal Carolina is on there. We may have two dumpster enclosures at Coastal Carolina. So um, if we need to add another one uh, up in a location here, we would sort of do something similar where it's off screen. I know our screening needed to be from six to eight feet high. So we would increase the screening height, but we would place it appropriately. So we, um, and it end.
Okay. And I'm sure, I know you guys have done this a bunch of times. So uh, once again, we would be remiss if we didn't bring it up and it was just like a clerical thing. But I believe that you know the numbers better than we would.
Yeah, absolutely. And I, I did speak to a, a number of different uh, trash companies. A thirty yard compactor for this type of job site would be taken out about twice a month.
Okay.
So appreciate it.
Okay, thanks.
What was your first name again? We're sorry.
Lucas, L U K A S.
Thank you, Lucas.
Thank you.
And um, probably the biggest thing is from a, a neighbor's perspective, obviously is the traffic and we've gone down that road. Um, but under H two, it says a condition of the special permit in the site plan approval process, the proposed traffic improvements recommended in the traffics uh, impact study shall be implemented. Can you explain what those conditions are that are recommended?
So as part of this, we need to install a center turn lane, a left hand turn lane. So if you're heading north to south, so, so coming from Bailey down, as you come up the hill, we would do a road widening to at a left hand center turn lane into the northern driver driveway. We would, that widening would continue uh, as you head south, um, it would be just sort of a, a center turn lane that would be sort of hashed out. And then when you get to the southern driveway, uh, we would have a left hand turn lane as well. So.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Borkowski. The chair will recognize Mr. Eckert.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Welcome.
Just a quick follow up question to that. I mean, this is student housing for R I T. So I, am I guessing that student, you're expecting ninety plus percent of the traffic to turn right and go north?
Uh, yeah, ninety percent, but we also shuttle service as part of this, like you've seen on other folks. So trying to limit the number of people. So there will be a shuttle that will take people up uh, to campus, but ninety percent of the people are taking a right hand turn and then ninety percent of the people are taking a left hand turn when they come back from class.
That's the R I T shuttle service, right?
This, I think it's going to be privately operated, correct? So they will buy their own shuttle buses and do their own.
Because R I Ts drives down there to hit the lodge.
Correct.
And turns around and comes right back up north by you.
If there's something that we can work out with them and place a bus stop, we're right now at the University of Arkansas, working with them on placing a shuttle on one of their properties down there. We'd be more than happy to put in bus stops and that's something that we can coordinate as uh, we uh, come to the conclusion of this.
Great. A couple of questions that I have um, based off of this, the um, does this site balance?
Uh, it's pretty close. So um, we've had three different contractors uh, go through the stuff. Topsoil is is the big unknown because we're just doing geotech right now and how much topsoil there is because when we start stripping these areas, so there'll probably be some topsoil that will be available for uh, low folks to take and process.
So it'll be sifting on site for sale?
Yeah, or they can remove our site contractor. It's one of those balancing games you play with a site contractor. Like if you can have the topsoil, you know, just drop our number down a little bit.
There's um, some large cuts in throughout the site.
Correct.
So again, back to the balances, I mean, is the majority, what kind of earthwork are you expecting either to truck in or truck off site?
Well, we're going to have a lot of trucking in because you know, we got sub base that's going through all this area. So when we plateau this, we're looking to take this material and flatten out these areas behind the walkways, behind the buildings for the walkways. So we try to get it um, within plus or minus five percent because we're working um, based on the best topography we could get on this site. Like if it was, I'll use the Wallman site to the north where you got a clear field and running topo on it was very easy. So we'll be within plus or minus five percent.
Okay, so again, how many, how many, you know, cubic yards either plan on trucking in or trucking off site, a ballpark, ten thousand?
They're probably in terms of tonnage of stone. I, I work in tons. Oh, so. Yardage.
But if you, I mean, trucking in stone is sub base material, foundation and that kind of stuff. That's not what I'm too worried about. More worried about, you know, ten thousand cubic yards of, of soil either coming onsite or offsite, depending on where that has to go and what kind of that, what that's going to do to the traffic.
Uh, well, initially I'm thinking there's probably between a hundred to two hundred truckloads of topsoil that could potentially be leaving the site. The rest of it, we want to keep onsite.
Right.
So.
But again, you don't know how much is either coming in or going off site for balance.
Going onsite is all going to be stone product, asphalt product, those things as well. And I can give you that number, but I, I would just be making up numbers, but I could take square footage of parking lot and a typical tonnage of one foot depth of stone sub base and uh, an inch and a half of uh, top and two and a half inches of.
No, and again, I'm sorry, I'm just looking at the cut fills. You've got a huge cuts and some large fills in a lot of this. So are you planning on trucking in ten thousand cubic yards of soil to, for embankment?
No.
Okay.
No. All, all, it's onsite and then any material that's coming in would be for um, it would be stone sub base for the parking lot and then anything that goes in the building footprint has to be stone aggregate as well.
And that's fine for construction materials. So the, and the only other plus pro minus is right now is just the excess topsoil.
Correct. Excess topsoil, everything else we're.
All the inner bank would pretty much balances out.
Correct. Because otherwise we just blow the number up on them hauling stuff off site, finding a, a dump site.
Right, you gotta go dig a hole of area.
Right. And if we're going to do that, it's better to buy your next door neighbor than to be driving up and down the road.
Okay, so that's what I was just checking on that. Um, the wetlands onsite are state or federal?
Federal.
They're all federal?
All federal.
Okay, so they've been delineated?
Yep.
Okay, that's what the marks are on that? Okay. Wetland W. I'm seeing on the grading plan in what would be, I guess, the southeast corner of the courtyard. Uh, what building is that? Let's see, south of building number six, give a grading plan.
All of it, great, yeah.
I'm seeing wetland W right in the middle, what appears to be is a detention pod.
Last item.
Yeah, I'm trying.
Uh, I am on. Uh, I am on C two oh one, site grading. Nope, there's another one that I'm seeing on the grading plan to the south of that. Okay, so those are, so those are two of the wetlands are being. Okay, I didn't know if that was discussed earlier, but you had another question on the wetlands and delineation. Okay, and therefore the, because that's what it looks like is a detention pond in the area of that one right there. Yep. Yeah, okay. The access road back to that same two oh one, and if you head down that, all these roads are private, right? All pavement and access is private? Okay, so to the west of that pond, there is a retain large retaining wall. And three pipes going underneath. Yep. Three eighteen-inch. Okay. Well, that's just seemed to me like a little bit of a cost savings analysis. I mean, a three-sided open bottom box cover would seem need to be a little bit cheaper than two huge retaining walls with the possibility of those pipes getting buried underneath retaining walls. Yeah, that southern one's almost ten feet, right? And then the pipes are supposed to be underneath the retaining wall? That just seems confounding with the three pipes running through retaining wall like that. Yeah, that's right. And then a precast or a retaining wall. Yeah, I forgot.
Sorry about that.
Okay. Uh, then that's it, Mr. Chairman. My questions have been answered. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Record. Chair will recognize Mrs. Brill.
Thank you, and I have checked off everything. Um, I kind of just answered my own question on the outdoor pools as far as, um, where they're going to be located. I wasn't seeing that initially. Um, but approval by the, um, County Department of Public Health, has that been by now, or is that something that will come?
Once we get site plan approval, then architect and then the pool supplier will take care of all those necessary things that need to be done.
And then what about lighting around the perimeter of the properties, both street lighting and wall-mounted?
So on the buildings. So we have light position and you, and if you don't go to C seven hundred and there, we have lights that are positioned in different uh, locations around the site, um, all dark sky compliant, you know, it's more safety and security lighting. We have lighting also out on on the backside of the trail systems and into the courtyards. Um, so it's really ma- maintaining that when people are going to the parking lots for their cars or if they're walking, uh, that, uh, we don't have issues. But, uh, I believe we meet all the regulations. We have, uh, no lights spillage, uh, over the property lines or into the right of way, but we provide ample light where it's not.
Around trails as well.
Correct.
Thank you, Mrs. Brill. And James, I forget, I think you mentioned, uh, did you not that you had seen the comments from the Director of Building and Fire Prevention and the Fire Marshal?
Yep.
And Stan Tech, right? The landscape.
Yep.
Okay. Yep, very good.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. McIntyre.
One additional question.
Yes, sir.
As far as town board resolution nineteen dash two forty-six does seem to have an interesting caveat to it. It does ask, seems like it's asking the planning board to reduce the buffering for the driveway. Is it something we need to do a, an approval at the planning board level, this roll call vote?
Is this on the article ten hundred and fifty feet?
Yeah, see a town board resolution on that one, Steve?
Yeah, it's, uh, in the packet, eighteen dash two four six.
So that's on historic site committee.
Yeah, and it's a right, probably about the second paragraph from the end. Need further resolve the town board therefore approves proposed construction of the driveway under our ten, including approval and encroachment, blah, 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 and the planning board incorporate a reduction of the buffering per two ninety-five thirty-four for the entrance road only while keeping the full buffering in place for building structures and parking lots. Does that require us to do a buffering reduction? Vote of some kind?
I might defer this one to our esteemed attorney. What do you think, Dan?
Which section is, is the board?
Yeah, I'll give you the resolution.
I was with them. That was into that, there's that radius they put around the structure of a hundred and fifty feet, but because of this driveway, you can't have without a hundred.
Right.
So I think it's like this area right here, but these buildings, because these buildings were initially pushed up closer to the the road, they just wanted to make sure that these buildings stayed.
Where they are.
Didn't, uh, create.
I know we've done other, uh, setback reductions. We've had to usually vote on it, haven't we?
Yeah, I, I mean, as far as the voting is concerned, I like to have Dan's opinion, but yeah, James is right. I mean, the town board was more concerned about the buildings and the parking lot for the buildings with the understanding that the roads coming in and the trail would have to be less than a hundred and fifty.
So are we set then? We don't need to do anything?
Tim's looking in the book.
Can I ask you a question before we, while he's looking in? Do you have provisions for like vehicle plugin? Is that on the site plan?
Uh, we don't at this point, but but we have like four of them that we put in it like Coastal Carolina just because, you know, over time as people adapt, we have.
Right, I mean, it's gonna happen.
And I think that's something that our building folks are, you know, electrical engineers, just because the loads that are required for, you know, electric charging stations. So if that's something that's of interest, I know that there are students that come with those things. So it's something that we probably will have to provide and we can provide um, and locations. It won't be for five hundred and uh, five parking spaces, but you know, we could find a certain percentage in different locations. And I think that's, you know, environment, being an environmental steward as well, you know.
It's gonna happen.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's here. Thank you.
Should we include that somehow in the minutes?
The section that the board is saying allows the, uh, the board to adjust transitional buffer is what they're saying. The section says transitional buffer, minimum transitional buffer requirement set forth in this chapter. And the section ordered by the town board allows the board to waiver adjust, uh, those requirements. I'm finding that the waiver adjustment is compatible with its site plan considerations. So you know what the dimension is that that needs to be adjusted?
So we're ten feet off the inside. We got a twenty-six-foot driveway. So we, from the property line to this point, you know, we're forty feet plus or minus. Um, but I would use this driveway works to a point, you know, here. If you take that hundred and fifty-foot radius, I don't know how the historic site committee works. Is it from a centroid or from each corner? So
I would do it from the property line, James.
So from the property line?
Yeah.
So I, we're gonna be forty feet here and from a corner of this property line here, you know, we're gonna be you know, a hundred feet in this location.
So do you know what the transitional buffer requirement is?
A hundred and fifty feet.
But I thought that was.
How much are you?
So you want to go to forty feet? So on this, on the south property line, you want to go from a hundred and fifty feet to forty?
Oh, no, we're gonna be down like on this south property line, we're gonna be at the radius of the driveway, we're gonna be at zero to ten feet. So if we're using, are we using where the improvements of the asphalt are?
I'm just saying, so it'd be the edge of where the road is gonna be.
So the radius of the driveway i- is zero, you know, the green space is ten feet here. Then you go to fifteen feet here, then you work to a hundred feet here. Is there any way to just to reference?
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Site plan as noted, you know.
So long as the dimensions are shown on there.
I, we can add the dimensions in like four different locations, you know, or because when you have a radius, it's gonna constantly be changing because it, we're not, here we're running, you know, parallel. But in this point, it's, it's a sweeping curve. So we go from fifteen feet to, you know, probably potentially wherever it hits a hundred and fifty feet at some point here. But we got the, we got the multimodal walking trail. So
Yeah.
So if we use that.
And that plan hasn't changed from what you submitted to the planning board for the historic site commit or for the article ten?
No, this is all the same plan that everyone's seen.
Right.
For all committees.
And I think I'd like to point out just for everybody's edification that the entrance is existing to the, to the house that's there.
Oh, yeah.
So they're just using the existing entrance but extending past it.
Or enhancing.
Yeah, when we initially started this project, we thought the high point was in front of the house. And so that's why the house was coming down. Once we actually got the topo survey from the surveyors, you know, their driveway, we had to adjust it by like ten feet, but where this roadway is coming in is pretty much their driveway.
It appeared that the driveway to the existing house was off their property.
Correct. It's on the neighboring property.
So if you just show the dimensions on the plan, I think the planning board can approve it, uh, can approve the transitional buffer, uh, as shown on the site. It just, it would just be noting that it, it's not per the required dimensions.
Right.
As, as drawn. So we should go to the dimension of the closest improvement. So
on this, we have the driveway. On here, we have the town multimodal trail. So we would, we would be measuring that this with our buffer reduction down to inside the driveway here and inside of the revised location of the multimodal trail because it's most likely. Required but recommended by them to allow.
I'd say in the motion, reference should be made to the transitional buffer waiver as shown and is shown dimensionally on the, uh, approved site. Okay, thank you, Dan. Any other comments from the board members or town staff at all?
No, I, I would just reference like, as we talked about, Mr. Chairman, the town board resolutions that the town board passed and those conditions.
Yep, so the chair will make a motion to approve application number two one zero one five contingent upon, uh, this maybe not the right, the proper terminology, but, um, this approval, go ahead, go ahead, Mrs. Brill.
As long as the dimensions are noted on the plans, the planning board can approve the transitional buffer as shown dimensionally on the site plan.
That's okay, that's part one. Uh, and then we've got to acknowledge the town board resolution one one dash one four eight and one one dash one four nine. Um, I'm trying to figure out how to, how to, uh, word this.
How about something's affected, uh, this approval is conditioned upon the requirements set forth in town board resolutions eleven dash one forty-eight slash twenty twenty-one, eleven dash one forty-nine slash twenty twenty-one. And then, and nineteen dash two forty-six slash twenty twenty-one.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. So I will repeat that, um, and then we already talked about, didn't we talk about the special use permits, right? They, uh, they need to adhere to. So that was, that was taken care of. So, all right, so the chair will make a motion to approve again application number two one dash zero one five. This approval is conditioned upon the requirement set forth in town board resolutions one one dash one four eight dash, I'm sorry, slash twenty twenty-one. One one dash one four nine slash twenty twenty-one. And one nine dash two four six, right? We had to do the historic slash twenty twenty-one. And then this is Brill, your language there.
Gotcha.
So, and can you read that for me and add that to mine?
It's that this, the one I previously read?
Yep, just.
As long as the dimensions are noted on the plans, the planning board can approve the transitional buffer as shown dimensionally on the site plan.
It all makes sense to everybody?
Will.
Will, will approve. Okay. Everybody good with that? The motion is on the table. Do I have a sufficient second, please?
Second.
Mr. Record, thank you very much. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The opinion of the chair, the ayes have it, the motion carries.
Hey, thank you for your time. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, next on the agenda, application number PB three zero five point two A, Foxfield subdivision. Section two A for final subdivision approval of a thirteen-lot, single-family residential subdivision on five point seven seven acres located on Hidden View in our one dash fifteen district. Uh, section two was for fifty-four single-family lots located on thirty-eight point four eight acres was previously approved as application number PB three oh five point two on May twenty eighth, twenty twenty. Who's here representing the applicant, please?
Uh, good evening. This is, uh, Peter Vars from BME Associates. How is everybody this evening?
Thank you. How are you?
Very good. Thank you, and, uh, thank you for accommodating, uh, myself to be able to attend this, uh, remotely. Not that I wouldn't mind driving out there to see you all, but I was able to get some other things done. So I do appreciate that. Um, so, uh, uh, as, as you, um, mentioned, Mr. Chair, what we're here for this evening is to obtain planning board approval for what we will now be known as Foxfield subdivision section two A. The purpose of this is, uh, the developer, uh, James Riverview LLC. They did receive overall, uh, subdivision approval, final subdivision approval for section two, which is fifty-four lots. They proceeded, uh, to obtain all their, their agency approvals. They posted the letter of credit. They've submitted the easement agreements to the town and they've actually been constructing the subdivision uh, through, um, spring and summer of twenty twenty-one. Uh, however, about a month or so ago, um, uh, you know, uh, in recognition of, of supply chain uh, and, and demand, uh, the reality was to kind of set in that really uh, over the next six months or so, probably really what they envisioned was really only having the need to have a, have ten to fifteen lots available, uh, just based on labor and material supply. So with that, what they opted to do was just, uh, requesting the approval so that they could just file these first thirteen lots that would be on hidden view, uh, which would be off the east side of, of section one. Um, as we mentioned, all the im- improvements are, are in place. We reviewed this with town staff, uh, and they thought it was best that we come before this board to obtain that approval. they thought it was best that we come before this board to obtain that approval, and thus we would subsequently file the map. Uh, everything in this section is as approved with the overall section two plans, uh, and as we mentioned, all the improvements are in. Uh, easements have been provided over the facilities, uh, that go into the remaining lands of section two for sewer connections, water main connections and and that, uh, and that, uh, as, so in closing, uh, just, this is really being requested so that, uh, they can just file this portion of the map, uh, at this time, uh, and then would subsequently file the remainder of the map, uh, in the latter or second half of twenty twenty two. So with that, I could answer any questions that you have.
Great, thank you, Peter, very much, uh, it shouldn't be too difficult, but the chair will start and recognize Mr. Borkowski.
Uh, this seems pretty cut and dry to me, I don't have any questions, thank you.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Eckert.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, I just have one question as far as, no, it's actually absolutely cut and dry, does there need to be a turnaround for, I mean, is this? I know they're still constructing all of the road, it's what's going in out there, but do we need to take a look at a turnaround for potential snow and ice considerations from this section not being tied in?
Uh, Chris Meyer, Director of Engineering and Planning, a- and again, Peter, maybe you could answer this question, but um, my understanding is they're still in the process of of constructing the road right now?
That is correct, Chris, and and Craig, it is their intent, they will put the binder down for the entire section two section. So there really will no be no need for the turnaround as Hidden View will connect back into Mossy Oak, which is the road, road to the north. So there will be a complete loop.
Great, and you know, I guess if it comes up to that point next year and something occurs, you know, I'm assuming the contractor be willing to put a a hammerhead or something in even temporarily to to have, if if that's the, if the contractor wishes to have the town plow the road, if there's COOs on that section.
Yes, and we, we would have no issue, if there's a condition of this approval, that if the road is not completed, uh, that a turnaround would be installed.
That's, thank you, sir, that's all that I was just looking at, that, no more questions, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Eckert.
Am I allowed to ask him a comment offside to the work?
No.
I was just gonna ask Mr. Vars if he saw the Red Sox game, so.
No.
I'm all set, sir, I should turn my mic.
Chair will recognize Mrs. Brill.
I have nothing, thank you.
Thank you, the chair will recognize Mr. Page.
I'm all set.
Thank you, the chair will recognize Mr. McIntyre.
I'm all set too, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, and the chair will recognize Mr. List.
And I am all set as well, thank you.
Excellent, chair will, anything further from town staff?
I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Mestrel. Okay, the chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Mr. McIntyre.
PB three oh five point two A.
Thank you, do we want to add the condition about the, uh, turnaround if the, um, what was that, Peter, if if the, uh, if the road is not?
I would say if the road is not completed at the time of of, um, of filing the map, that the turnaround would be installed.
Do you mind that?
Yeah.
Okay.
The road is not completed at the time of.
Would it be, well, I guess I'll ask Craig, should be, is it filing the map or is it?
Um, a turnaround would only be requested if the contractor requests the town to plow the road.
Right.
COOs, it has a dead end.
Yeah, so it really would be as of the first C of O.
Right.
Right, Craig?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's only again at a request of the contract, so that's something we're required to do unless it's requested.
That's true, so I guess that's what it should say.
Well, it it, I, I I'm gonna go as far as to say, I don't think it needs to be in the condition of the approval.
Okay.
Certainly something we can work out, we have it on, you know, record that if it's needed, the contractor will provide one.
I don't think we don't need to make a conditional, you're saying?
I'm okay with it.
Very good, if you guys, yeah, if you guys are good with that, then we'll just, uh, take the standard, okay? And Mr. Page, will you have a second? Okay, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The opinion of the chair, the ayes have it, the motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you, appreciate it, have a good night, and the Yankees will be back next year.
Oh, your dream.
Good night.
Final item this evening is a discussion item, board members, fellow board members, uh, Market Square Retail Building Edition. Planning Board to consider re- reapproving application number eighteen dash zero one one for eighty six hundred square foot building addition. This project was originally approved on January ninth, twenty eighteen, and reapproved on January tw- uh, twenty nineteen. Uh, but construction was never commenced, so, uh, Matt, welcome.
Good evening, Matt, with Benderson Development, we are requesting reapproval of a eight thousand six hundred square foot, um, referred to as an addition, but it would be a new tenant standalone, it's not an addition for the Bye Bye Baby on the east side of Market Square. Since it was initially approved, we did not move to construction, we first wound up focusing on bringing one ten grill into the vacant restaurant out parcel. Then we kind of moved to construct the addition we did next to Marshall's on the other side. And then we sort of moved across the street to Market Commons, redoing the Chili's, and now at this point, we are looking in April to actually move into construction for this building. From an architecture standpoint, it will basically be the same as the Nothing Bunt Cake building that was constructed next to the Marshall's. Um, so this is the look, ephes, brick columns, aluminum storefront glass. Nothing has changed on the plans, the plans we resubmitted are the exact same plans that were previously approved. Um, so we haven't proposed to change anything from the architecture that was previously presented, from the engineering that was previously presented. Um, if the board is inclined, uh, we hope to approve this, then we still do have to go back to the zoning board of appeals because there was a parking variance as part of this project, so we just have to get that done. And one final thing, being from New England, I was very happy with the Red Sox game.
Thank you, Matt. Okay, we'll move around, uh, we'll start, Mr. Borkowski, any questions or comments for for Matt?
More, more a comment, and, uh, Matt, yeah, you 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 guys always do good stuff, so don't get me wrong here, but I believe when this first came up, I said no on it. And I'm seeing why I did that, because I'm in that plaza all the time, and taking that out is a cut through. What, what people don't understand is, um, that top exit alleviates a lot of pressure off this bottom exit, so a lot of people can make left turns, here, the traffic's backed up so much, you can't do it. You, you are going to cause major, major traffic problems with that there, um, so I I I'm not in support of this, but that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Borkowski. Chair will recognize Mr. List. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, do you have a tenant in 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 line?
Uh, we don't have a signed lease yet for this space, but usually, once we get the board approval and we move forward, start in construction, they usually lease out pretty, pretty quickly, we had the other one, on the Nothing Bunt Cake lease signed prior to having that building constructed. And then we have the remaining tenant sign going through on that one as well, so we would expect the leases to come through pretty, pretty quickly. This is a good area in the town, and then things have done very well, we sing even in the last couple of years in this area.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Thank you, Mr. List, chair will recognize Mr. McIntyre.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Welcome.
Uh, man, I think way back when we first went for the approval of the whole Market Square uh, concept plan, and they showed all these possible locations, all these buildings, the the issue regarding traffic came up. And I believe the way it was resolved was that if a traffic problem should present itself, Henderson would actually, uh, go in and find some sort of a solution for it.
Yes.
Be self-acting on it. Have you addressed anything on this issue that Mr. Bor- Borowski brought up?
We have not, I haven't specifically from tenants or customers heard it saying that there is a traffic issue there that we have to proactively address, um, as things have come up over the years. We have done many different things to improve, um, traffic, whether it's at our suggestion or that the town spearheads and wants it as part of approval. For example, with Chick-fil-A, having with the supervisor specifically, wanted to get that additional left turn signal added for the marketplace Jefferson intersection. So ourselves and Chick-fil-A, we moved forward, worked with the DOT and got that installed, so we are very much proactive, and if there are issues that arise, we will proactively do it, we don't see this as, I understand it doesn't allow people to then come around that way, however, there are other access points as well coming out of the plaza. We find people do go in other directions as well and have cross traffic and the cross trips as well, so we don't see eliminating that side access as going to create a traffic issue for the plaza, we wouldn't specifically want to do something either that would create a, a traffic issue for the plaza.
So you're, what you're saying is that, if I hear you correctly, there is not a traffic issue that, uh, is in within that area.
That is correct, yes, there's nothing that has been brought to my attention, and usually I'm.
And if I can interject, I agree, I did not say there is currently one, but the only reason there isn't currently one is because there's that cut through there. Um, and and if I can add one more thing, I'm sorry, Mr. McIntyre, um, another thing that people forget, and especially Christmas tree shops, a lot of their loading, when somebody buys something that's a large size, is required to go in the back of that store, and there used to be three cut throughs, one was next to Home Depot, which is still there, one was where, uh, next to Marshall's, which is no longer there. And now you're taking two out of the three away.
Yes.
Um, so that where the other one happened, not a big deal, because those are right next to each other, this is, this is gonna be a big deal. Sorry, Mr. McIntyre.
I'm sorry, I'm just, I I kind of want to get a resolution on this, is, uh, Chris, would it be possible to have some sort of an interface with Benderson to monitor the traffic iss- issue after the, uh, site has been completed, and then if there develops a traffic issue, then as part of the site construction, some sort of resolution be made?
Yeah, certainly, if there are issues that come up after construction, or, um, you know, obviously, we've been, we'll be more than willing to meet with Benderson, and I'm sure they'd be million, willing to meet with us as well to come up with some type of solution. Um, and we've done that in the past for things that have come up.
Matt, would you be willing to?
Oh, absolutely, yeah, whether, yeah, whether it's part of the board's condition or just on a, on a day-to-day basis, I would, I would hope that our relationship is good enough where the town would just reach out on, on any issues as well, I mean, one thing we could do, if the board is so inclined to approve it, we could go for a week and block it off, and then say just see what happens, and and then do something like that as well, that way, at least we can, we can maybe come up with a solution, or we can see that it's not necessarily an issue, but we can, yeah, we can definitely.
Just from, from my point of view, that would actually be a decent solution, Matt, because, um, I I think what's happening, I don't know if Christmas tree shops knows that you're, you're doing this or the other places, so by blocking it off for a week or two.
Yep.
They're gonna go, why is that like that?
Yep.
And you might get all kinds of feedback you don't even know is there, so that, that would be, that would be a great first step.
Yeah, absolutely, and there are, are as part of the leases as well, they do evaluate the centers, the plazas, they come up with their protected access, they have their protected access, protected parking fields, no build areas as well, so they very much, especially the national tenants, their legal teams tear it apart, and they make sure everything they do specifically need that they, they make sure they get in their leases, so if they make, want that access or want specific parking, they make sure it's signed, and they actually have it legally protected, that we couldn't build something there, so anything we propose, we do have the right to do it per the, per the leases we have attendance, yeah.
So part of this project would be a traffic devaluation at the end of the construction period and something resolved if necessary.
Yeah, and I think Matt raised a good point, by blocking that off right now, we can see if there's issues. Uh, the only thing I would say is just let the fire marshal know.
Yep.
Just so that he knows what's going on.
Yeah, no, absolutely, yeah, we'll coordinate that with with yourself, with the town as well, yeah.
And then, Matt, you'll get a report back to Chris, and he can report to the board on the results of that.
Yes, yeah, I can go back to another meeting as well, and we can all talk about it as well, do another discussion, that's not a.
That's a nice solution.
That's not a problem.
Thank you. Mr. McIntyre, the floor is clear, you're awesome, thank you, chair will recognize Mrs. Brill.
So what did you say is a, is a resolution to do?
Well, we'll blot like, so if the board's okay with approving it, we'll go out there in the next couple, couple of weeks.
Closer for me.
Sorry, so we'll, we'll go in the next couple of weeks, month or so, we'll actually block off the parking field that's there, mimic the construction of the building just to see what happens, just because it's easier to do that than to monitor it, building is up at that point, clearly, the solution's not knocking down the building at that point, so this would be the easier and better way to at least try to see if there's an issue, I'm not personally expecting there to be an issue, but it at least will give us a way.
You're getting into the holidays at that point too, so traffic will be a little bit, um, heavier at that point, which would be good.
And what if, what if it is an issue?
Figure it out at that point, but there won't be a build, that, that, we're not gonna start construction on this until April.
Yep.
So at least at that point, there won't be a building up or half up or under construction, and we can kind of figure it out from there.
Um, I I do remember Matt bringing that up, and I remember saying I shop in this plaza a lot, and you, I remember you thanking me for it, but and I remember, I I believe it was Matt also brought up the fact that when you're doing the special order items from Christmas tree shop, you get your ticket, and you have to drive to the rear of the building, and they load it for you. And now we're not gonna have that access, which is immediately to the east of Bye Bye Baby.
Yes.
And that, Matt is absolutely correct, that entrance way that faces the Holiday Inn there, that does get so bottled up right now, and there's not a lot of room for stacking. And I personally have taken that other route because you're able to stack more, um. It it is used a lot, I I, I definitely see that. Like, I'd be very curious to see what that test is gonna do, especially going into the holiday season, but, um, there, there's no way to create an additional roadway somehow around that pond in any way, shape, or form?
I mean, we could look at at possibly even like a one-way going from the front, because it's really, I'm assuming the, the concern is coming from the front to the back, not really from the back to the front, so we could possibly try to see ma- maybe a twelve-foot wide one-way roadway coming along along the side as well, we may have to just tweak.
I, I, I think you, you absolutely do need to look at that, and I think one way is a great resolution because you're right, people are going to be going to pick up their items at the Christmas tree shop, so they're coming from the north side of the property to go down to the south side of the property to that rear door. And then the other, you know, twofold is they're going, you know, anybody is gonna be leaving out of that en- entrance and exit way. And a lot of people kind of scoot up to that side road if they know what's there, and a lot of people apparently do, because it's always being used. So I, and I think when somebody's coming out of Christmas tree shop, if they're directed as a one-way marking, um, that is gonna solve that. So I truly think that would be something to really.
We can take a look at that.
A strong.
Yeah, we can look at that for sure.
Um.
May have to just tweak a little bit of the grading for the pond or toss in a retaining wall or something, but it's not that we haven't done before.
Sorry to interrupt again, Matt, what's the, what's the front dimension of that, like, how wide is it?
I believe it is sixty eight, yes, sixty eight feet, like, eight inches.
I was just wondering if you could make it narrower and have a road to the right of it, but.
Yeah, we'll take, yeah, we can, we'll definitely take a look.
Yeah, and your solutions, you know, it's, it's good, if, uh, you could do this, this temporary thing and find out, no, it's absolutely no problem, we don't have to talk about it, but at least we have some other solutions.
Matt, how much, you live in Buffalo?
Nope, I live in, uh, Rochester, I actually live out in, uh.
So you, you spend time at this plaza?
Yeah, I'm, I'm here all the time, my wife shops here, my wife is probably my biggest critic when it comes to shopping centers and plazas, we build something, I get five comments on it right away, this is wrong, this is wrong, and did this wrong, but.
Yeah, yeah, park, park out over there and just take a look.
Yep, absolutely.
Yeah, thank you so much, a- and quite frankly, I I believe there's parking, um, parallel with the roadway on the side of Bye Bye Baby that's used quite a bit too.
Yeah, there's a, there's a whole parking field that runs right down the side, so this does eliminate some parking, which is why we'd have to go back to the zoning.
And I think eliminating parking, there's plenty of parking up front, um, because there's not usually a lot of cars, can you tell I shop there a lot? My gosh, there's not usually a lot of cars there, but I bet there's always at least six cars parked along that side of the building.
Yes.
Um, so there's that, and then the pass-through.
Yep.
I digress, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Brill, chair will recognize Mr. Page.
I can't any, add anything to that.
Thank you, Mr. Eckert.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, my comments are based off the same off of access, my questions kind of back to Chris, did the fire marshal review this?
Well, uh, when this became before the planning board, Terry Echwell was the fire marshal.
Right.
And Terry did sign off on it.
Right.
However, we do have a new fire marshal, even though it was previously approved by Terry. That's something that we may have to look into, and he may have concerns as well, Matt, so I, I.
Well, now you're bringing him back into the loop, because if you're gonna do a temporary closure, then he's gonna know what he's.
Yeah, so I, I think I would certainly want Mr. Harrod's, um, input on this, but again, it was previously approved, so I, but I, I think it's certainly worth taking a second look at, and I, I do like the one-way access. I think that might solve a lot of issues.
And that might be, again, a sign off for him as a potential down the road, if, you know, if that becomes an issue, he can, at least we've addressed it, maybe. The. The, my concern on top of that access, because I wasn't aware of the Christmas tree shop, my wife doesn't tell me how much she shops there. Um, is the access, the, the one remaining is in the middle between Home Depot and now, uh, what used to be Marshall's. But that's constantly stacked up with, you know, outdoor garden supplies, mulch bags, key, you know, pallets and et cetera. That becomes much narrower of an access point, just because of the outdoor storage, which maybe also have to be limited in permit. You know, if they come in yearly for that permit, for that storage or if they just go ahead and do it. Yeah.
That I don't know, because we don't actually, we don't own Home Depot. They own it themselves, so we actually, besides having REAs over that and everything. We don't specifically have any.
Right.
Control, unfortunately.
So that might be an interesting thing for him to take a look at too in review of this and potential alteration is that center drive aisle and how much that gets utilized. It's the only one that's gonna be left.
Yeah, just to answer your question, Craig, I know in the past, they used to have to come in for any outside storage, um, like Home Depot, Lowe's. Um, Walmart, they would have to come in every year for a seasonal permit, but I think because they just kept getting approved and approved. Uh, I believe power was given to the Director of Building and Fire Prevention to, um, just grant those without it coming before the town board.
Well, and that's where I guess it might come in to play, because they're stacking all up the entire west side into that one driveline, from what I can see from satellite imagery. So that may be something they want to look at again. So that's, uh, but it's, uh, it's been a good communication and hopefully a, uh. It can come to some sort of determination, so I agree.
And, and that's a, a beat a dead horse, but he makes a good point. So I mentioned that the Home Depot, as did he, is the only place to get through now. If you, if you put that there anyway, um, I've seen at least probably, well. My sense of time is not great, but in the last two years, I've seen at least four cars with flat tires, because all the nails coming out of the pallets. Um, so that's a, that's a real thing too. I, I'm sure that they could be taken care of talking to Home Depot, but when they're. Certain times of the year when they have a lot of pallets and nails are falling out, I, I've seen so many flats over there. It's crazy, um, that when. Now we're gonna put more people through there, so that's not good.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That was my comment.
Well, would it behoove us, and I'm throwing this out there, can we extend a conditional approval to this? And then have them get back to us with the, this result of their.
Yeah.
There's their ad hoc study here and then also, uh, maybe a plan for a, a twelve-foot wide road. Uh, if you're not gonna start till April.
Yeah, we're not starting till April, which is why.
I mean, we can give you potentially an approval tonight. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, right, right.
Yes.
To, 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 uh, approve, yes, the, uh, reapprove.
Reapprove, I'm sorry, Dan.
I mean, we can also just table it and I can come back. I'm, I'm fine doing that, which is kind of why we submitted it early, because we didn't want to build it until April. If there happened to be any, any comments or anything, we had time. It wasn't like we're trying to put a shovel in the ground.
Sure, sure.
So we could do that, we could do that as well, whatever.
Oh, thank you. Yep, okay.
Now, can you, um, maybe Chris, it would be you notify the board when that test?
Oh, absolutely.
I would like to be aware.
Yes, absolutely.
I'd like to know, um, I'd like to check that out and take a look at it, especially when we're getting into November.
Yeah, we'll, we'll coordinate that with, with Chris as well. Make sure the fire marshal's aware, just so they know there, that access granted, they'll be able to drive right on through it, but.
You're thinking, you know, a week, you know, you're thinking a seven-day period or just a weekend or?
No, I would, I would think put it up for a week, at least kind of see, see what happens. I mean. That would kind of, that would at least give a, I think, a good representation. If you go a full week, you're gonna get nighttime, weekend, the whole gamut.
I would say a week minimum. A week is good because you get every day.
I would say two to three weeks.
Yeah, I mean, just so you can get the input from everybody, or maybe you'll find that out in the first week, man, I don't know, but I, I think you're right. Maybe, you, you do the Black Friday weekend, I guess you'll find out quicker now.
Okay, now the chair will entertain a motion.
A motion to table this application.
Mr. Borowski, thank you. We have a sufficient second, please.
Second.
Mrs. Brill, thank you.
If the fire marshal requires the biggest piece of equipment to be able to circuit, to, to circle that whole thing. You should start from there and, 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 you know, I would get that answer from him first. Yeah, I, I think Mr. Wilson was certainly, um, of, the Director of Building and Fire Prevention was very curious about, you know, this project because of a different fire marshal. And he did want to show it to, uh, our new fire marshal, so he could certainly look at it.
Okay. Okay, all in favor of a table, say aye.
Aye.
I'll pose a nay. Okay, then.
Thank you very much.
Motion is tabled. Matt, we'll see you sometime soon, okay? Thank you for coming tonight.
Not a problem. Thank you. So Terry's approvals are not like in, permanent? Thanks, Matt. Thank you very much.
Much appreciated. Chair would like to acknowledge the Councilman Stafford is with us this evening also. I didn't see you walk in. I apologize. Thank you.
Um, if you would like to close the, I'm sorry, make, if you can make the motion, yep.
Mrs. Brill, thank you.
Yes.
Yep, um, not on.